It was a letter to the staff and everybody today.
Where's the clean eggs? Would you pass me one, please?
Okay, here we go. Is this our audit?
And it's good, right?
I'll see back around two.
It's good, right?
It is good.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I take.
Everybody gets to copy. We're not gonna do that.
Sounds consistent.
Yeah, I have two more things to hand out.
Well, I need to get started. Hold on, hurry up. Okay, okay.
One more time than this.
Okay, here we go. I'm getting there. There we go.
He has one more.
I gotta hand out for you guys.
I got that one weighs forty pounds.
You know, they go, you don't eat them up here. They back it. All of that. They not go through the skin. Okay.
You sit there.
Okay.
This is the one.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's perfect.
Oh, okay.
But you know how you collect those heads? Those besties. She used to make Indian warquels. Indian leaders and she made Indian warquels for them. We don't have a lot of many markets. Most in meters.
I should say one, two, three, everybody clap. Good evening and welcome to the April twenty-second Ferguson City Council meeting. The opening ceremony meeting is now called to order. Let us stand for a solid prayer.
Dear Lord, at this time, we'd like to ask your guidance, your strength and your wisdom to help TJ Brown, our officer of Ferguson, Missouri, continue to heal. May you keep all of our first responders safe and in your grace. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Board pitman, could you please call the roll?
Councilman Noah?
Here.
Councilman Kacop?
Here.
Councilman Rockton?
Here.
Councilman Lippka?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Mayor John?
Here. A quorum is present. At this time, we will move to our public comments. We ask that when you approach the dais, give us your name and the addresses to where you live. You have three minutes to speak. When the alarm goes off, you can finish your sentence and don't start a new paragraph. We have a busy night tonight and we are family, so call the first person. Dan Welker? Please silence your phones. Thank you.
My name is Dan Welker. I live on St. Louis Avenue next door to the post office.
Okay.
A lot of folks know me, some don't. First meeting I've been to in about probably close to ten years. But tonight, I just thought I had to come up here and tell a couple of my friends how much I appreciate what they've done here in Ferguson, on the council and outside the council. Also, I would like to say too, congratulations to the new council people. I appreciate you, Mayor Joe, I really do, and my other council person. But mainly, I want to talk about Heather and I want to talk about Linda. Yeah, whatever. You know what? Getting to know you outside of your role as a council person is really been something really cool to me because I didn't know that I wasn't the only nerd that lived in this town. And Linda, there's not enough I can say about you. You know, I lost my sister on January twenty-fifth this year. And it was quick, it was unexpected and it was sudden. And now I found a new sister. And somebody that'll answer my phone call anytime I want will talk to me and talk me off a ledge. And to me, the most important thing about tonight is that even though you're not a council person anymore, you're going to be taking care of Ferguson as long as you're here. And I love you both. And yeah, Nick, you're okay too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
John Lippka?
I'm not gonna cry. Not gonna cry.
Hello.
Hello.
John Lippka, eight-one-eight La Mesa Court. So just want to come up here and congratulate Linda, especially today. I, of course, have been on this journey for nine years with her from going door to door for three years to try to get more votes for her. I mean, we would go every weekend. I think we especially like to go in cold weather and rainy weather because we thought people would feel sorry for us and actually answer their questions. Things I've learned is you can't make everybody happy all the time and I truly believe that now. I don't think it's possible. You know, I've seen a lot from Linda over the years. I think the why is for me, in two thousand and seven, our daughter passed away. And my brother, my other brother and my family all moved west, right? That's where everybody was going. And they're like, hey, you need to get out of that neighborhood. And I'm like, no, we like it here. These are our people. So when that happened, at the funeral, there was several thousand people that came. And my brother, he came up to me and he said, I get it now. Said, I live out there. And he said, I don't know anybody. He goes, you go to the grocery store, Paul, you know, half the people there. You go to the brew house, you know, half the people there. He goes, it's just a community. And he got it at that point. And he never asked me why I didn't move out of here again after that. So that was the why, right? And then, you know, just Linda, as far as she is always going to help. And there's some just amazing examples that have to do with city council and don't have to do with city council. You know, for example, we had the Tasten Ferguson that we used to do and it was, it was pretty cool. We raised money and one of the biggest things we were able to donate to was Jennings had about two hundred homeless children that were students. And they needed a home for these students to live in. And we were able to use the money from the Tasten Ferguson to furnish a house for them and provide a place for orphans in Jennings that wanted to live there and still go to school. So that was, that was one of the pretty, the pretty neat things that we're able to do. I think the other thing that I saw was during the tornado, it's a two thousand and fourteen, had all the chainsaw crews come into town to help clean up people's yards and Linda and then with the Baptist church helped put that together. So I think what you're seeing from Linda is just continued volunteerism, whether she's on the city council or not. And, you know, I just want to congratulate her for nine great years and the lessons that she taught me. Thank you.
Vivian Green?
My name is Vivian Green. I live at fifty-three twenty Elsie. I'm sorry, I don't have comfortable with. This is my first time. I've been in my house for thirty years. I moved in nineteen ninety, October the first. The first, I have a complaint for Ferguson that if it's possible. I thank God that I happened to be at home the other day. And I thank God for our councilwoman, Ms. Noah Knocked on the Door, for a problem I have been crying and praying to the Lord for the twenty years. The first ten years that I was in my home, it was good. And then the, these last twenty years, I have a problem with the water that's in the backyard through the easement. It goes from my house all the way down. It runs down the side and to the front of the streets. And it's, I have knocked on wood and everything. I've had the water company come out. I've had different inspectors or whatever to come out. Everybody has passed the bus. They say it's the Ferguson spring. Well, I don't know what the Ferguson spring is, really. I don't know, but they pass the bus back to Ferguson. With this water being outside, I've had what they call truck bees, those giant biggest bees you ever seen in your life. They, they, they build, they build a nest and they just come congregate, drink the water. I have snakes. I have raccoons, different vermin that need water because water is accessible right there. When my lawn service come, they have, you know, those big old riding lawn mowers. It's hard to maneuver on that side of the property because it's a swamp. It's literally like standing water. You step in the back on the side, come down. It comes, it's all, I have several steps to the front part of my house. And it's water there all the time. Drain this water. So it's, I'm feeding the animals. I mean, I'm giving them water. My back room has been flooded. I had to get everything thrown away. New flooring, they had to come out and repair it. It never stops. When it's winter time, I have an ice skating rink in the front of the street. From my house over here to the person's house over there, it's a complete sheet of ice. I cannot, and I'm old, you know, I can't even go to the mailbox. I gotta try to find some grass or whatever. When people come and get dropped off, they have to maneuver their way around to try to find solid, flat, unfrozen ground to come up. And this water, it's been there. I don't know who, what or where or how. And when she knocked on the door, I'm like, oh, I know God answered prayers because I did want this water to be cleaned up or stopped or whatever. And it goes everybody. So all of us on that side and out to the front. Thank you.
Before you go, can you tell me your name again and your address?
Vivian Green.
Okay, that's easy.
And this problem has been for twenty years.
And your address? LC?
Yes, ma'am. E-L-S-I-E. Right there, Woodstock.
Okay.
Look at the south burden.
That's Warren Three. Thank you. We got it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to first say congratulations to all the candidates that got their positions in their spots as city council members. I want to really say thank you to the people that voted for Jamil Franklin. I knew in not being on the ballot that that was, that was a bigger mission in Ferguson that needed to be done. And so I'm hoping that the people that voted for him don't leave him stranded and not actually help him at this point to make sure that things are done in war too. I want to thank all the members that are on the council as well. I hope that we didn't always see eye to eye on different things, Heather, but I know during our process of saving the bus route, eventually you sign the bus route. And I appreciate that. And I hope that when you all are not on council, that you continue to help us be that voice. I know, like I say, everybody have that love for Ferguson. But the thing about it is, is how you include people in the whole process as people. Because everybody loves Ferguson, but it's with liberty and justice for all that matters the most. Some things that I wanted to actually bring up when it comes to, I had mentioned before the whole thing about the demographics of who's here in Ferguson, where I can actually go up to see because I see a lot of Hispanics, Mexicans doing jobs throughout the whole city of Ferguson. And I'm trying to find out about the jobs as far as the African-Americans, as far as other people that live here in Ferguson, you know, when it comes to those jobs and how they're actually giving out, how, how are they giving out, you know? I see a lot of work going on in Ferguson as well. As far as, I talked to somebody that was from Verizon Wireless and they were talking about how things were going up under the ground or whatever. And so I was just trying to find out, you know, what other projects that are going to be happening around us so that we can know, maybe y'all can talk about that at the city council meeting so we can know what projects to look forward to. When it comes to the, the structure of Ferguson, as far as who's in, in control, I would like to know when it comes to the committee development director, is she the person that's in control or is it the city manager? So. So. I don't know what you're talking about, but I really wish I, you know, but like I said, you know, my time is going by. So, and it was on twenty-five seconds when he disrupted me. I don't know. So when that goes off, I want you to know I had twenty-five seconds, okay? Because I don't know, I don't know what he's talking about, but as far as disrupting you. You know what? If you go to June eleventh meeting, Rachel stood right over there and put a platform out saying who was in control. And when it comes to, and when it comes to her telling us that you have to report to her, usually our Ferguson council meeting. Okay, now, can I finish talking?
What's the time?
It was twenty-five seconds. No, it says three minutes right by now, but you could have talked to me after the meeting so that I can finish my comment.
Me too.
John. John.
See, now you would have put me up out this meeting if I had answered them.
John.
I would appreciate if I get my twenty-five seconds.
You can get your, you, you can get your twenty-five seconds.
Thank you very much. Now, as far as creating a situation, the thing about this right here, if it's something really going on that is not right.
Speak to the council, please.
If it's something that's really going on that's not right as far as the level of authority and who's reporting to who, as far as creating a problem, Corey, I was just having a discussion with him to find out why he's not at the meetings anymore because usually every department head is reporting what they're doing. So I just asked him, if that's creating a problem, what's going on? That means that something's been hidden behind doors. So I just asked the question, who's really in control? Because the, the, the structure that she laid down on June the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four says that people have to report to her. And as far as the everyday business, it's supposed to be conducted and reported to are done by the city manager. So I don't know how this causing the problem, but obviously something ain't right.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Brooks.
I thank you for letting me know because I didn't know that.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Jennifer Doherty?
Alardi.
Alardi.
Hi, I'm Jennifer. I actually live in Wensville, but I'm here to speak to you guys today because I wanted to express my gratitude. In two thousand and sixteen, the city of Ferguson, it gave permission to a nonprofit organization called Simple Positive Play. And it gave us permission to use an underutilized building at January Wabash Park in order to make it into a play space that local families can come to for, at no cost in order to play with the supplies and resources that we have there. And we also attract families from nearby counties and communities. And they all come together in order to enjoy these playful resources. So I actually started Simple Positive Play in my parents' driveway in two thousand and fourteen in my childhood home. And even then, I frequently stated that I would continue to find ways of connecting families to playful resources as long as the idea had support. And now I'm here in two thousand and twenty-five feeling very supported by the families and educators as I address you this evening. So recently, Simple Positive Play was awarded a grant in order to host an information meeting for parents, educators and caregivers where participants can learn more about the power of positive play and positive interaction between family members. And this was the only grant that Simple Positive Play has ever written. So two thousand and fourteen until now has the only grant that we've ever had. And it's because we've had community support to be able to give us the things that we need, including money to be able to re-carpet that whole space and to be able to fill it with a lot of other supplies. I've always said that I could fill a room with cardboard boxes and have a good time and show families how to engage. But because of the support that we've had from the community and because of the opportunity that the city of Ferguson has given us, we've been able to impact so many different families who are growing and learning to connect with one another. And they support us by giving five dollars here, ten dollars there. They'll bring in toilet paper for running low. They bring snacks and water and all sorts of different things. So at this point in time, we are moving to a different direction. Simple Positive Play won't be able to operate like it has in the years past. So the soft climbers and the builders, the bookshelves, the play kitchen and the couches are all in the process of being removed so that January Wabash can become more of a multipurpose use area, which I think is a great idea. Because we are, as much as we work hard, we are all volunteers and we can't dedicate the number of hours that would be necessary to like validate having that space where other people can use it in order to be able to connect with the community too. But play is very important. Play is extremely powerful. And I still want to continue a conversation of how we can use play in order to engage families and to work together and to help kids explore their interests and to work in low-risk environments and gain problem-solving skills and social emotional skills and literacy development all through toys. So I came here today to express my gratitude and to thank you for letting us play in your space.
All right. Pam Hartley?
Hello, Pam Hartley. It's a bunch of you that don't know me. It's great to see everybody tonight. I don't usually come in person. So thank you very much for allowing me some time and thank all of you so much for all the services that you've provided for our cities and all of you, actually. And for those behind me for being here, being engaged and supportive. And I will encourage everyone that is here to go out of here and continue to be engaged and supportive in your community and in your neighborhood and try to get other people, more people engaged and to support these people. Because one of the things that is a little irritating every year is we work so hard for our candidate and to try to get out the word of whatever it is, whether it's FNIP or something going on in the city, is how few people really come out and support you and vote. So, of course, we're here, I'm here especially tonight because a few of my friends will be rolling off after nine years of, of, you know, unique service to this town. And I'm sure you're not going to stop. And I'm grateful for those that, you know, are willing to put themselves out there and, and to run. And I'll always support those that run and all of you that are here. So please, very rarely do people reach out and ask me for something, for time or energy for other things. And so please know that those of us that are here that care are really here for you to, want to support you. So Linda and I have had many years together and I want to thank you for all your service and being there for the, you know, the drug dealer that lived in the rental down the street and, you know, all the things and, you know. Heather, same thing, and for always being supportive. I can't thank you guys enough for helping lift up the city the way you all do. Because without you, this city would not exist. So please continue your hard work and please reach out for help when you need it. And thank you again so much for all your, your hard work and good luck to those that, you know, have won this last race. And again, please go out and help get other people to come and support and be engaged. It's really important if our city's going to continue to thrive. Thanks.
Thank you. Jill Holtrup?
Don't start again till I get up there. I'm going to talk really, really far. Good to know. Okay. Good evening. My name is Jill Holtrup and I live at one hundred South Clay. And first of all, I would like to congratulate our new council members who will be coming in. And thank you for running. Because this is their final night as city council members, I and many other residents of Ferguson would like to sincerely thank Heather Robinette and Linda Lippka for their constant and unwavering commitment to all citizens of Ferguson, not just those in the wards in which you represent. Their time serving on Ferguson City Council during the past nine years would have been, I imagine, during one of the most, if not the most tumultuous and difficult periods in the history of Ferguson. Yet they were both willing to continue their service to our community by always aspiring to elevate the quality of the conversations and debate between all council members in an effort to move into the next chapter of what Ferguson's future history will be. They have always been productive and positive components of being part of writing the next chapter of how the world views Ferguson, Missouri. Many may not realize the majority of the important time and work that members of our city council devotes to the governance of our community. It takes far more hours than we can imagine. Time we probably would not be willing to invest ourselves. It is during those times that Linda and Heather have worked tirelessly taking care of the business of Ferguson. Much of the legislation that has been passed in recent years that benefits Ferguson today would not have been possible without the research, data gathering and input of these two women who have, these women who have contributed. How they have kept being willing to contribute to their service, to their city for nine years is beyond me. But I sure am grateful that you were. Just a few of them, many accomplishments that I believe are noteworthy is to, is to mention is Heather Robinette and Linda Lippka have always worked as part of the team with all members of council to move beneficial legislation forward. And just a few of the things we are proud of you for. I can't believe I'm losing it. Being a part of the team who spent the ARPA funds responsibly. Being a part of the team who were able to work together to get many major road projects funded that are being realized today. Being a part of the team who recommended firing the people in our city government who were not doing what was necessary to get us through the consent decree in a timely manner and then replacing them with the best people who could. Their common goal has always been to serve and to work for the betterment of Ferguson with the rest of our city council. Lastly, for nine years, and thank you for giving me a couple. Lastly, for nine years, and thank you for giving me a couple minutes seconds. Every time these women, these two women, Linda Lipka and Heather Robinette said yes to taking the many hours out of their lives to devote to the city council business meant saying no to the time they could have spent with their families. Heather and Linda, we thank you from the bottoms of our hearts for all you have done for Ferguson.
Do you have anybody on line?
No.
I have one person that I want to introduce.
Zoom, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Not anyone that expresses they wanted to sign in.
Can I, can I take a moment, Mayor, just real quick? Well, he's not going to last much longer, that's why. He's probably gonna hate, but.
I'll give you this personal privilege.
Thank you. So ladies and gentlemen, I am very pleased to introduce to you my my surrogate son, Mike Caballero. He is on the Zoom right there waving to you. He is in Phoenix, Arizona, and he's here tonight. And I just wanted you all to meet my son.
Okay. Anyone else on Zoom? Did anyone send any comments in? Okay. Public comments is closed. We move to our manager's report. City Manager Hampton, do you have a report for us tonight?
Yes, ma'am. It's a short one because I know you do have a rather lengthy part of this meeting. Uh, but first off, I just want to tell everyone, social media is a great place to get things off your chest, but it's not an official complaint to the city. Please email myself, Dave Musgrave, or come to the office and I'll be more than happy to talk to anybody. Door is always open. Um, also, police and fire did train in a a building that was owned by Mike Palmer. But the city did not pay one penny for the demo. The city did not pay one thing for demolition. We always ask when there's an opportunity to train police and fire, we always ask for those places that are being demoed, just like at Flow Valley. We're asking right now to train in those buildings as well. Never do any compensation um for any of that. But that's a perfect time where a police officer can use our ladder truck to go onto a roof so they can during the day in a controlled atmosphere. So that's why we do that training. And we can break windows, we can make doors out of windows and things like that. Perfect time to do it as a house or a structure that's going to be demoed. But we do not compensate anyone for anything. I just wanted to make that clear for everyone. Um, the other thing is, you know, I bring the people to this council meeting. I am the boss of the the employees of the staff. Um, the organizational chart is in the uh budget every year. Um, but I can give you a quick rundown because council, there goes city clerk and Apollo are are attorney. And then it comes down to the city manager. After the city manager fingers off to every department. So they report to me and Dave Musgrave. So, um, but I'd be happy to have a conversation one-on-one with you on that or anyone else that has any questions. Um, just a few events that are coming up. Farmers Market is going to start May third at five oh one Plaza. Also, that same day, the St. Louis FC is going to do the grand opening of the mini pitch. Um, we start our concert series May sixteenth at five one Plaza, now run from seven to nine. Also, the Twilight runs this year, and that will be the same day we celebrate the one hundred twentieth anniversary of the uh fire departments. So we're trying to get more people to come in and then hopefully stay for festivities at the front at the run that evening. So that's kind of my report that I have, but I'd like to um congratulate both of you women.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Uh, Council, do you have any questions for the City Manager?
I do.
Councilwoman, no.
What day is the um the farmers market? What day did you say?
That is uh May third. It's Saturday.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the City Manager? Okay, the City Manager report is closed. City Manager, do you have special presentations?
Yes, Mayor, we have two or we have three presentations tonight. We're going to start off, I'll bring up Nadra Tan- Tankins. He is our financial uh director for the city of Ferguson, and he will introduce the audit. Um, one thing I am very proud of is with my Dave's tenure, I've been bringing this up. We weren't a big hole, right? But we are now at a place that I can say that we're caught up financially.
Thank you, Chief Hampton. Again, my name is Nadra Tankins. For those of you who haven't met me before, I am the new finance director. I've been here with the city since about September. Um, this evening, we thought it'd be a great idea to present the audit report to the council members that are leaving and those that are coming in. So everyone can have a full uh picture of what the financials look like. Um, just a brief note for me uh that as the chief mentioned, we are um a lot more caught up than than the city has been in the past. Uh, you all are aware that this is our second audit just this fiscal year, and we will have a third one for fiscal twenty five coming up shortly. But um with no further ado, here is Mr. Jim Smerschel from Smerschel-Trolleur to have some brief comments on the financial.
Yeah, and one other thing I'd like to say is like the Ferguson Finance Department is coming a long way, and we are in charge of our own testing. And we have now released CLA, correct? And so it's our own finance department now.
And our our bond ratings have gone up quite a bit too, haven't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. Uh, first off, I want to say it's probably wise to put the auditor on a three-minute clock. I'm going to echo preliminary comments that were made when we were hired less than a year ago. You all hadn't had an audit issued since twenty-two. And that puts you a bit behind. Uh, with this audit, you now have audited statements through June thirty of twenty-four. And shortly thereafter, we will begin planning to do the audit of the twenty-five year end. Or Nadra is going to be seeing us in his in his nightmares, but uh and and certainly we have seen firsthand the growth and development. I want to thank Nadra and and the rest of the management staff and you all for putting in place uh an infrastructure that emphasized the importance of fiscal responsibility. Because ultimately, as auditors, if we don't have that, we can't issue. So I have uh excerpts from the audit that you all have in front of you and the excerpts. Well. Maybe I had excerpts. There we go. Um, so first I want to talk just about the audit overall because it's important as auditors for everyone to understand that we understand that we work for the council and by extension, the people. We do not work for management. Our audit is an audit of the management work at the direction of the council. And so these comments are designed to assure the public that we understand that, and that's a standard part of every audit. Now, when I started my career a few years ago, uh and audit a clean opinion, which everyone wants, a clean opinion insisted of two paragraphs. Currently, the world being what it is, a clean opinion now is twelve paragraphs over three pages. However, it's still true that the most important part of it is the first two paragraphs that say we were engaged to and we did audit the financial statements for the year ended June thirty of two thousand twenty-four. And the statements are being presented in accordance with accounting principles, generally accepted in the United States of America. So congratulations on on the clean opinion and being caught up. So quickly, let me say management is responsible ultimately for ensuring that you have appropriate policies. It's our job to oversee that and to report to you if they haven't done what they thought. In the same way, uh, even though this is an audit, there are some estimates involved, depreciation and such. More importantly, in the financial statements, you will see disclosures. And those disclosures deal with things like the list of fixed assets that you have, the list of debt that you have, your pension status, all of which we're going to talk about in a minute, and some contingency is including a two million dollar liability that you have in connection with a lawsuit. Lastly, I want to say the audit went without a hitch. Had you been in the room, you'd have been bored, but you'd have been pleased with how it went. There were no disagreements over financial accounting issues, no disputes over access to auditing records irrespective of what we asked for, no disagreements over financial statement presentation to ensure that the report that we could give you was comprehensive. And so you that's exactly what we expect of management and what we can tell you have. Now, in terms of the actual statements, we're first going to look at your audit, our assets. And people in the in the community can see as well, you start with, and and you all have this in front of you as well. Uh, you start with cash of eighteen million, seven hundred thousand dollars. That is very similar to what you had last year in terms of a cash balance. In the same way, the property taxes, state sales taxes and other taxes receivable very comparable to last year in terms of composition and amount. The lease receivable of eight hundred and seventeen thousand dollars is down about a hundred thousand dollars because you've collected monies. That's the asset associated with lease for the towers that you have. Where you're going to be receiving roughly a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. Now, accounting principles require that we treat some of that as interest, as if it were a note. So this asset went down by about ninety thousand, but you actually collected a hundred and twenty thousand in total. The inventory consists mostly of salt, which the God, the good Lord willing, we won't use again until uh several months from now. But you have a significant amount of salt and a little bit of fuel. Uh, and then capital assets, your infrastructure, net of depreciation of thirty-six million, six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And let's look at how that changed this year. So your infrastructure in total started the year with a cost basis of sixty-four million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, which includes all of the assets of the city, includes the land, it includes the buildings, it includes your streets. During the year, you added three million, eight hundred and forty-some odd thousand dollars of additional infrastructure to the city to support your operations. The largest piece of that was in the streets area. So you spent over two million dollars uh capital in capital improvements on your streets, all of which is capitalized now. By the way, of that two million dollars, some million, two hundred and fifty thousand of it represented ARPA monies that you had received in connection with COVID that you spent. And we'll look at ARPA monies again in a minute on your balance sheet as a liability, deferred revenue. You also spent another roughly five hundred and sixty thousand dollars on South Dade and another over a quarter of a million dollars on the South Dade parking. Sorry, played. Uh, in addition, you see that you had machinery and equipment additions of some five hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. I can tell you the largest single addition was a street sweeper for two hundred and seventy thousand dollars is also a lawn mower, it's the lawn mowing equipment that you have for in excess of seventy thousand dollars, a little bigger than the lawn mower I have home. If we look at the next page, you see the representation of the depreciation associated with your assets. That is to say, the accounting representation of the wear and tear on your assets. And you can see that that is some two million dollars. So the important part of that is year in and year out as a community, you want to see over time that you're reinvesting monies in excess of the depreciation. Otherwise, you end up with a ramshackle sort of situation. Uh, so two million in depreciation and three point eight million in in infrastructure means that you added a net million, eight hundred thousand dollars to the overall infrastructure of the community, which is a real boss. Those are the assets of Ferguson. If we look at your liabilities now, you can see that liability start with accounts payable of a million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. That is substantially less than you used to see year in and year out. Typically, your accounts payable would be more in the line of a quarter of a million dollars. The reason it's higher is not because you had past due amounts, but you had some significant balances in there. You had some four hundred thousand dollars in payables relating to some of the infrastructure that you added that we just saw. So you purchased it and it wasn't quite paid for by year end. You also had a more than six hundred and fifty thousand dollars due to Centene Corporation in connection with an agreement that you had. That's sitting in that accounts payable as well and has since been paid. You also have other liabilities of two million, almost two and a half million dollars. The largest two pieces of that represent the two million dollars for the class action lawsuit that was accrued, actually accrued in twenty-three and will be paid in twenty-five. So it's still sitting on your balance sheet in twenty-four. It'll come out of your cash in twenty-five. And there's also another three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollars in pension monies that have been received by the city, hadn't yet been paid out. So again, if you boil those two items out, business as usual for your accrued liabilities. The last item I want to focus on is current maturities, the long-term obligations and long-term obligations. The largest piece of that is your bonded indebtedness. And you have three pieces of bonded indebtedness outstanding. You have a two thousand thirteen issue that had to do with the building of the community center. You have a two thousand nineteen issue that had to do with a pumper for the fire truck. And a two thousand eleven issue that was refinanced in twenty-one that had to do with firehouse improvement. So if we look at your bond indebtedness currently, you can see, if you look at the second column from the right where it says balance end of year, and these are all as of June thirty, you see the series two thousand thirteen, which is community center, still has outstanding balance of four point six million. And annual payments of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, as you might imagine, that is scheduled to be paid off in about ten years. I look forward to being here for the party. Uh, there is the series two nine, two thousand nineteen pumper with a balance of six hundred and ten thousand. As you see, that has payments of about a hundred thousand a month. That's a lot, six years to go. And the um firehouse general obligation bonds of three point two million, there's about seven years left on that. Just for perspective, the original bond indebtedness for those items, top to bottom. The two thousand thirteen series, the original bonds were at nine million dollars, so more than half paid off. The pumper, yeah, we're we're very much in favor of that every time. The pumper started at a million, so you made significant progress there. And the uh firehouse was at eight million dollars and sold it more than half paid off there as well. So real significant improvement in all those areas. The last item we'll talk about on your assets and liabilities is your pension plan. And this is a real area of strength for the city of Ferguson. And and you can see that quickly, you just look at the very bottom percentages at the end of each year. And you can see that in two thousand twenty-one, you were a hundred and twelve percent funded, which means that the pension funds for those employees were covered plus. Then the market kind of fell out of bed for you a little bit, and you dropped down to ninety-seven and a half percent, which let me tell you, we do a lot of governmental entities in Missouri and in Illinois. These percentages are absolutely among the best. So you were at ninety-seven and a half, then you were at ninety-eight point one, now you're at ninety-nine point eight. We're not allowed to round up. But you're at ninety-nine point eight percent. So that continues to be both a strength because it means you're required to use less budgetary monies to fund it on a go-forward basis and an assurance on the part of the council that the employees' pensions are protected.
Mayor, I have a question.
Please.
May I ask?
Yes.
Um, so I have a question.
Um, so I have a question on the, on the pension fund because I was, I was learning about uh, something that's going on currently in our markets where there is, uh, debt that looks really, looks, it looks great and it's, it's, uh, I think it's like long venture capitalist debts, venture capitalist debt, where they are going into these corporations like Joanne's Fabrics and, and big corporations like that. And they're, uh, refinancing some of their stuff. And so now these corporations, even though they're being, they're, they're financially okay, they're still making their numbers, they're going out of business because they can't meet the payments on those debts that these, uh, companies did. And now those companies are selling those debts to pension funds in cities. And they look good on paper, but they fall out on the bottom. So my question is, with this very strong financing that we've had, and we've had this strong for many years. I mean, we've, we've maintained this for a long time.
Didn't happen just overnight.
No, it did not. So I mean, that's something, even during the worst of times, we were always proud of that pension. So my question is, are we being strong stewards of this money? Are we doing any kind of investing? Are we, I don't want to see us investing any of this money in anything that's currently out there that's, uh, making the news because it's turning out to be bad investments that look good on paper.
Okay.
Yeah.
Your management, just a second, but I'm just first say, we've seen no evidence of any inappropriate investments of that nature.
These don't look inappropriate either. There's, there's straight investments, they just fall out apparently.
But that's not us.
Yeah, so this is not through, um, Schmeichel. So our pension is run or by UMB as well.
Okay.
We also have a different, um, audit firm for that, correct? Um, that takes care of just the audit, for, just takes care of just the pension. They'll come in and do a presentation to council once a year as well.
Okay.
And they'll tell you where all of our investments are.
And UMB is traditionally very conservative, so I think we're safe there. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Now, I'm gonna, in the interest of time, I'm gonna go to the, uh, statement of activities, which is your revenues and expenses. Now, every income statement, statement of activity in the world starts with revenue, except for governmental entities, which starts with expenses. And it starts with expenses to drive home the point that you all have an obligation to ensure that the expenditures are appropriate and protect the governmental entity. So we're going to start here with the expenses as well and then move to revenues. On the expense side, your expenses of twenty-three million, almost three hundred thousand dollars are up quite a bit over where they were in previous year. And they're up primarily because of increases in personnel and staffing in police and fire. And so we saw a substantial, uh, and it's not my place to speak to whether that's good, bad or indifferent. I'll just say that's where it went, a substantial increase in salaries and benefits in the police and fire area, as well as in the, you spent significant monies in highway and streets, most of which was in infrastructure. So those two items drove your expenses, and I'm not going to go through each item, but we'd be here till I start the next topic. Uh, on the revenue side, very quickly, uh, the, the one, two, third, the middle column, that says operating grants and contributions. You see culture and recreation, that's an unusual item for you all. That five hundred and twenty thousand dollars was a parks grant, was not federal monies. And it went to date that we just talked about. Uh, it went to the pavilion and generally just proved those kinds of cultural areas for the city. Capital grants and contributions of three point two million dollars, almost all of that is federal monies. And I'm gonna say right now, and there are pages that follow, but I'm gonna tell you, you all were required to have a separate, what's called, single audit, which is an audit that focuses only on federal monies received and expenditure. And so there is a separate, single audit attached to your documentation that addresses that. And I can tell you, we had no issues in our single audit. We certainly have had times where we have had them. But you did not have, we did not have to call you out for any identified weaknesses in internal controls or material deficiencies in the manner in which you processed your monies. Uh, that report shows some two and a half million dollars of federal expenditures, including ARPA money that you spent this year, some one point two million. By the way, you still have another two point eight million dollars of ARPA money to be spent in the next two years, two million, eight sixty-eight. So that's on your balance sheets.
That's no problem.
I, I have no doubt.
We, we can spend it.
Yes. The, the last comments I want to make, uh, I'm gonna end on sort of a positive note, I think. Under general revenues, you see a number of items that come to nineteen million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, which consists of sales, utility and property taxes. Sales taxes are up some half million dollars, utility taxes, property taxes, another half million. But what I really want to draw your attention to is the investment income. And I'm just gonna read you three numbers. In two thousand twenty-two, an audit we did not do, in two thousand twenty-two, your investment income was sixty-seven thousand dollars. In two thousand twenty-three, your investment income was four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. And in two thousand twenty-four, because of your and your management's efforts to appropriately, as good stewards, invest your monies, your investment income was shown at eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Uh, Jim, Houseman Williams?
So I know, uh, pensions are a good attractive and retaining issue for employees. How much money could we save if we did a 401K for employees instead of a pension? Is it any savings?
Traditionally, there would be some savings.
But percentage off.
Uh, that would be subject to what sort of matching parameters you put around the 401K and whether or not you can even do that relative to the current employment environment. Uh, that's another question altogether, but it would be almost impossible for me to tell you what you could save without knowing first what sort of provisions you would put in place in terms of matching.
Okay. Okay.
I also know the side of that as well. Um, we actually do have, uh, four fifty-seven plan, I, I believe it's called, where the employees can directly contribute to a retirement program. So we have both programs going on concurrently. Currently, there is no match for that because we provide the pension. Um, so that's kind of, you can consider that a match.
So they get both or?
Correct. It, but the four fifty-seven is optional. Whoever decides to contribute to a retirement plan, um, just like a regular 401K, if they were in civilian life, uh, that's their option to do so, but they're still gonna get the pension. So in lieu of matching that, like most companies do, we offer that pension, which is, you know, wholly funded and secured for, you know, their future enjoyment. So I don't think that, um, as Mr. Trelor said, that there is necessarily any savings in, in the way you're thinking about that, but, um, as previously mentioned, the pension board does have, uh, um, UMB come out and present the findings to them that will happen on May sixth. And if the council, uh, desires, I can have a meeting at your next meeting as well. And they can come to present the, the full pension financial, so you can ask all your questions directly to those financial investors.
Okay, one thing, Nigel. Uh, I need three packets for our new council people.
Yes, ma'am.
So, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Three packets for our new council people. Okay, so they can get them tonight.
We can probably, we can, now.
We brought it.
We have extras. And then before I'm just have to bust Nadri's chops for a second because he called me Mr. Trelor.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, Jim Smerschel, I can assure you that Julie Trelor would not appreciate. Julie is now retired anyway.
And if we have any extra, we need to give them to the, uh, department heads. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Congratulations.
Thank you, Steph.
Um. City manager.
Uh, next, I would like to have Dwayne James come up and talk about the Twilight Run. In May. Right? Yes.
No problem. Gotcha. No problem. You are all good. I'm mature, because you're exposed. Good evening, good evening, good evening.
Evening.
How are you all?
Great.
Wonderful, wonderful. Good evening, Mayor and Council. And of course, my accolades to the council members. Yeah, all right. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Dwayne T. James. I am here to talk about the twenty twenty-five, what is going on? Yeah, there we go. All right. The twenty twenty-five Ferguson Twilight Run, um, that is scheduled for May seventeenth, uh, this year. Um, just a little bit of agenda, just talk about how we began, talk about the numbers and the feedback up to this point. And then also talk about the plans and the requi- uh, requests for the sixteenth year. And then just provide some contact information in case anyone wants to talk more about, um, the race. Uh, the start began in two thousand and ten as a way to extend the work of Livwell Ferguson. Um, it really wanted to showcase the newly constructed Plaza at five oh one. The ten K was added in two thousand and thirteen. The run is managed by a nonprofit called Livwell Events, which was formed in two thousand and eleven. And then the run supports, um, local organizations that provide area programs and events in North County that showcase the enjoyable, healthy and sustainable aspects of physical, um, activities and fitness activities. It's always wonderful to see that picture and see all of the faces, um, that have grown up in the last sixteen years as well. And so over the sixteen years, twenty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-one participants have registered for the event. Uh, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty was distributed to beneficiaries organizations since two thousand and ten. Uh, we have been a five-time winner of Big River Race Management's Best Neighborhood Support Award, something that we cannot take complete credit for as a planning committee because this is truly about the neighborhood. And then we were two thousand and eighteen's Runner Choice Award as well. And so a couple of the accolades, uh, these are the numbers over the years. As you see that we started in two thousand and ten, uh, when many thought that we wouldn't get fifty, um, runners to do that first year. Uh, we got nine hundred to actually register that first year. Um, our highest was in two thousand and fourteen with two thousand and eighty-seven. Um, dipped a little bit over the years. COVID took a toll on us. Um, and we have been trudging our way back. And last year was one thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine registered participants. Um, I will say this year, we're tracking a little bit lower than we were last year. And so there will be a request to each and every one in this space that is also in listening on Zoom as well. And so making sure that we hit those numbers. Um, the FTR experience is like no other. It is more than just a race. I am biased in that opinion, but I truly believe, truly believe it is like no other. There are team discounts to ensure that we are equitable for all of our residents. Uh, we do have professionally timed, it is a closed course, which is wonderful to some and not so wonderful to others. But it is a closed course to ensure that it's the safety of our runners and our walkers. Uh, you do get a commemorative shirt. Um, there is a finisher medals for every finisher that crosses the finish line. We have custom awards. This year's awards are actually being manufactured by our own soul craft that is in downtown, um, Ferguson. We do have beer samples by Ferguson Brew House, cheer stations by many of our neighborhood organizations, water stations by residents as well because there are some hot, hot days in May. Um, we have healthy vendors at the finish line. We do provide a free concert to ensure that it's fun for every, um, participant. And we do have food for sale that benefits local organizations as well in the finish area. And then of course, we promote all of our local restaurants as well. Uh, and as you can see, there is a party going on always at five oh one after the race. Making sure that you don't take any pictures of me that I'm actually dancing out there, but there are some videos. We won't talk about those videos. All right, uh, in two thousand and twenty-four, as you can see, the reach actually hit forty-four states, three different countries, and three US territories were registered for the Ferguson Twilight Run. And so what we're talking about is more than just the community race. We are hitting a lot of the United States as well as international as well. My goal this year is to turn that entire state, um, a Ferguson Twilight Run color to ensure that people across the United States knows about the Ferguson Twilight Run. So if you know of someone that is in a different state or in a different city or in a different country, let them know that they can participate in the Ferguson Twilight Run as a virtual runner. And so a few of the quotes and comments over the years, if you follow us on social media, you see that we're posting this. We're always looking for additional quotes. And so if you want to share your experience and your impact of the race, feel free to talk to me, but this is a race for everyone. Um, it's a movement that brings our community together. It's the only run in St. Louis that truly embodies the spirit of community. We enjoy the energy of a vibrant community. Um, the impact on local businesses cannot be overstated. It is cool that so many great local organizations benefit. Choosing to take the first step could change your life. So a lot of you are thinking, uh, Ferguson Twilight not run is not me. I'm not looking at anyone on the dais. I'm talking to the people in the back. It is okay. Understand that this race is for you as well. It is an, an event that our team looks forward to every year for the way it brings people together. That is by Kurt Negwer, Senior Vice President of Negwer Materials. So as you can see, I'm talking about it, but we have a lot of other people that are also talking about the Ferguson Twilight Run. And so a little bit about this year, um, it is scheduled for Saturday, May seventeenth. This is the sixteenth year. It starts at four o'clock where the entertainment begins. Um, the five, the, at five PM, the One Mile Fun Run starts at five forty-five. We have the ten K. Six PM, we have the five K, eight PM is the award ceremony, and eight thirty, everything will actually end. It's a little bit earlier than last year. But you can see it's an evening race. We do complement the other events that are going on in Ferguson during that day, including the hundred and twenty, twentieth anniversary of the Ferguson Fire Department. And then also, of course, the award-winning Ferguson Farmers Market. This year, this year's, uh, beneficiaries are Emerson Family YMCA, Girls in the Run, Strengthen Honor. Uh, we usually have a band, but this year the planning committee has decided to have four live DJs throughout the course. Um, Big Papa G's coming back, DJ Cassiana, Tony Roper, who is a, um, fan of Ferguson in many different ways. And then also DJ B2 Tech. I can always say that wrong, but excellent in so many different ways. And so as you can see, that we have a great lineup for you. Um, the routes, as you can see, we showcase the, um, as much of Ferguson as we can along the five K and the ten K. And so this is the same route that has been the last couple of years. Um, this is actually on our website as well and on our social media page, pages. We do expect road closures along the route, starting at four thirty and seven forty-five. We will have signs out. We will do door hangers to ensure that everyone knows that the streets will be affected. Understanding that this is a deterrent, not a deterrent, this is a, um, this is an obstacle for a lot of our residents, but we ask for their grace during this time to ensure that, um, the streets are clear and safe for our walkers and runners as well. And I do also want to acknowledge that a lot of the residents along the course come out and cheer on the runners and cheer on the walkers, have their own family gatherings and have their have their own family gatherings. And that is something that our runners and participants really, really enjoy. So, thank you for that. Um, current sponsors, and so you can see, we go um throughout the St. Louis area to bring in sponsors to help um offset the cost of this event. Um, so thank you to all of these sponsors for helping us basically put on this uh race e- each and every year. But also let you know, there's not too late to be a sponsor. So, if you want to go ahead and add your name to the shirt or add your name to the website, or if you know a business organization that might want to be a sponsor, again, have a conversation with me. It's as low as a hundred dollars up to thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, a huge thanks to the planning committee that is actually on your left. A lot of these individuals have been there since day one, um, so you can recognize a lot of the names. So please, if you see any of these individuals, thank them for their dedication. We start meeting in October um monthly, and now we're meeting bi-monthly. And then soon, we'll meet um weekly to ensure that, I'm sorry, monthly, bi-weekly, and then weekly um to ensure that we put on an excellent race. So I cannot, I stand up here informed you, in front of you, but understanding that this is a planning committee that continues to do the work. And of course, thank you to all of the um staff and departments of Ferguson, and then the volunteer sponsors and the residents that helped make this Ferguson Twilight Run very successful and very, very. Um, request.
I always come and laugh.
If, as long as you finish, is wonderful and great. It's terrific. So I just ask everyone to register. Um, understand that um I've had those same conversations in my head that I could not walk one mile. I could not do a five K, which is three point one miles, or a ten K, which is six point two miles. Understand that we are here to support you and we're here to work with you. And but, and that just it, the please, I ask you to consider registering. Um, again, I'm not always talking to the people in the diets. I'm just talking about the everyone in the space as well. So this request is to everyone. And please invite your friends, your family, and everyone in your contact and social media list. Some of us that are older also have those Rolodex. Go ahead and invite people in those Rolodex as well to join you as you run with Ferguson. And then also support, um, support by volunteering. There's a lot of different uh volunteering opportunities. Come down to the event um just to participate and feel the energy. Share the information with your neighbors, businesses, and other stakeholders, so they know that this is something that they can support as well. And then lastly, we're having um informational sessions, just so people can learn more about the race. This is on our website and then also through our social media pages. You can also click here if you want. And I can send this to whoever to um ensure that this information goes out. Um, this information also went to neighborhood associations and then also uh the council members just to share it out with their network to let everyone know that we are trying to get everyone to know what's happening about this race. Um, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for all that you do. Um, and then for all the support.
How much is it for a participant?
So it's as low as twenty dollars and it's as high as thirty-five dollars. So twenty dollars for a one mile and then thirty-five up for a ten K.
Okay, uh, is it any family discount or that's per?
I'm sorry. Go ahead and answer your question. I'm sorry.
Is there any family discount or is it still per person?
So it's family discounts. And so, if you um get a, a group of ten or more, then you receive three dollars off. If you're younger than nineteen, um, you actually get five dollars off. Um, and then we actually have some youth sponsors as well. And so, if you bring in a group of youth, we do have, they can get in for free.
Housewoman Lippka.
Just a little suggestion to the room. If you can't walk a mile, three mile, five mile, bring two pairs of shoes, change when your feet hurt, and you can keep going. It works for me every year.
I love that suggestion. There we go.
I, I didn't raise my hand, but um thank you for, for coming to present this. This is like one of the best things that goes on in Ferguson, just seeing so many people. Um, seeing everybody out in the neighborhoods. I mean, it's just such a special event. And um I hope to do it. Uh, I hope to see you there.
Thank you.
You run the five or the ten?
Well, I just want to say, this is hands down my favorite thing we do in Ferguson every year. And I, I've watched you bust your tail every year getting this together, and I appreciate it. I see you. I couldn't run if a bear was chasing me, but luckily, we have a volunteer group of cyclists, which uh, and I usually ride out in front of the fastest runner, which is usually a tough ride because the, that first guy is really fast. But uh, I love what you're doing and, and I appreciate it, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's everyone. Alright.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate you all.
Appreciate.
Thank you.
City manager.
Or I have one more presentation tonight. It's uh the Community Connect Outreach, and Ms. Moore will do the presentation of this.
You want a lot of personal privilege tonight. Housewoman, let, let, because you have personal privilege.
Thank you. So this is my last night, so yes, I'm going to take advantage of it. I would like to introduce again, as Chief Hampton did, Ms. Jamicia Moore. She is family to me. She's been my family for twenty years. Um, her kids call me grandma. And she, I'm so very proud of her because she is in medical school, she runs a restaurant, and she runs this nonprofit, which feeds children. So, we, she came to me. I made, I called the right people and we're making this happen. So, go for it.
Well, thank you. Um, good evening.
Good evening.
I do not have a PowerPoint presentation. Um, I literally just wanted to come up here, introduce myself. My nonprofit is called the Community Connect Outreach. I partner with Health and Senior Services, and I provide meals for children in underserving areas. I currently feed at McClure South Berkeley. So what a typical day looks like. Um, when they are released from school, you have their transition period where it's about fifteen minutes. They are, they go in the cafeteria at McClure South Berkeley. My staff is there. They set up a balanced meal with a protein, a vegetable, a fruit, and a milk component. And they're served a balanced meal before they go to their after-school activities. It is a hundred percent free. Last year, I fed at Forestwood. Forestwood touched my heart, um, because I did evening time, which was football teams. But anyone in the area is able to eat eighteen years uh younger. It can be an adult if they are special needs, or I can't turn anyone away. The children over there knew my car. They knew every time that I was there, we ended up making flyers. We started to do activities, and they looked forward to the meals that were served to them. It would touch my heart because I wanted to do a little more. Um, I found myself buying socks and T-shirts and coloring books because a lot of kids over there didn't have simple things to have fun in the summer. Um, this is something that I've been doing for now three years. And I am feeding at Forestwood again this year. I will be feeding lunch and supper. Breakfast wasn't very successful last year. Wasn't too many kids. I guess they're still sleeping in from staying up late. But that is what I do. During the school year, I participate in C A C F P, which is Child and um Nutrition Services. And then summer food is through the summer.
What time?
I haven't finalized the time um yet, but for supper, I'm normally there from six to eight.
And we're doing this through the city, correct?
Uh, yes.
Yeah. So it's not, last year it was through a football organization. This year, it is through the city. So the children be able to come into the park for lunch and dinner. And how many times a week?
It's Monday through Friday.
Okay.
Yes, Councilwoman Noah. That is so awesome of you. Um, are you on social media so I can follow you?
No.
Young people don't do social media.
So I can't take any images of the children.
Yeah, I was like the scheduling things that she can do.
But what I will do, um, I forgot his name. What is the guy that I'm?
Joseph Seestrom.
Joseph Seestrom. I am working with him. Once I send everything to him, is it okay if I drop off a packet to you also? You'll know the times and.
Because I can share with people. Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And Mayor.
And we also provide that as well.
So, and then the other thing I would say too, to the council coming in, if you're listening, um, this would be, you know, we've had conversations amongst ourselves as council members, is how do we keep the kids engaged? How do we keep them out of trouble this summer and that kind of thing? So, you know, this is pretty much Forestwood. You can come in from any areas Ferguson to eat. She, she will feed them. Um, but, you know, if, if there are people out there who want to create or activities around lunchtime, around dinnertime. I mean, I don't want everybody putting it all on Jamicia. She is a very busy woman and a mother of five, but, no, four, sorry. Sometimes, sometimes Jeremiah, Jeremiah counts as two. But um, the pr- the point being, you know, this is an excellent opportunity, like that positive play lady was talking about. This would be an excellent, excellent opportunity to partner up and, and create some things that make the kids look forward to that instead of looking forward to doing things they shouldn't be.
Absolutely. And I do have business cards a- as well. And what I typically do, um, I have churches. I'll partner with them, and they create the activities. We provide the food. Or I'm willing to try to do anything with the kids because it's to keep them engaged and out of trouble.
Good job.
That's it. Our special presentation is closed. We move to public hearing. We don't have a public hearing tonight. We move to our consent agenda. City Council Meeting Minutes, the regular meeting minutes for March to twenty-fifth. I re- I requested a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it. The regular meeting minutes are approved. For boards and commission, we have traffic commission for three eighteen. Requesting a motion in a second to receive and file the miss- uh, commission meeting minutes.
Linda Lipka.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Traffic commission meeting minutes are filed. No appointments for tonight. We move to our request. We have a request to council April twenty-ninth council meeting. I requesting a motion in a second for approval.
Why?
Because we got two me- two meetings tonight, and we're going to get it all done tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
A motion in a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have it. April twenty-ninth meeting has been canceled. Okay, no proclamations for tonight. We move to resolutions. We have resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh nine. Uh, without objection, I'll introduce the resolution. Attorney Ryan, could you please read the resolution?
Yes, Mayor. A resolution of the City of Ferguson and the State of Missouri declaring support for the preservation, the federal tax exemption of municipal bonds.
City manager.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is being a push by uh most mayors throughout the St. Louis City, uh, St. Louis County as well. Um, to protect the um, the tax exempt status of bonds. And this is a letter of support.
Exactly.
We don't need taxation on our bonds. So that's why. So, it's a motion in a second for approval.
So moved, Mayor Linda Lipka.
Second it, uh, Clerk Pittman, could you please call Row?
Aye.
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 Mayor John.
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh nine passes. We move to resolution number twenty twenty-five dash ten. Without objection, we are introduced by the mayor, council members, Nor and Lipka. Attorney Ryan, could you please read the resolution?
Resolution authorizing the City of Ferguson's participation for the Missouri Department of Transportation for traffic enforcement grants to enhance public safety.
City manager Hampton.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this also helps uh pay some of the salaries of officers that are working potentially DUI checkpoints that we will have now in place and additional uh uh traffic for the city.
Thank you.
I requesting a motion in a second for approval.
Mayor Jones, I have a question. You have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Noah has some questions.
Just my quick, thank you. Um, can we also use this grant to purchase more flashing stop signs or speed humps to place them near our parks and schools?
I'm gonna bring uh Scott, Captain Amos up. He can answer that, fortunately.
Do I need to repeat?
He heard you.
We can. Uh, that's part of the blueprint grant. It is part of the MODAT, which we're going to be applying for in the month of May. So we'll be applying for at least two more of the flashing stop signs from them.
What about for any speed humps near the schools or parks?
They will not, they will not.
They won't do.
The signs for the speed humps, we are taking care of as.
No, not the signs. I meant actual speed humps. No, this wouldn't qualify.
Part of the budget.
Okay. I was just asking because as I was reading it.
This is not part of that.
This is first, okay.
This is for, yeah, for uh awareness for traffic. So it's going to be the flashing stop signs for speeding for the city. See how fast cars are going where the speed enforcement sign up.
Okay.
Stuff like that, but that's part of.
Thank you.
For our safety.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I, I am requesting a motion in a second for approval.
So may.
Second.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Second, the Queen of Noah.
Clerk Pittman, could you please call Row?
Aye.
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 Aye. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash ten passes. We move to resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eleven. Without objection, will be introduced by myself and Councilman Castle. Attorney Ryan, could you please read the resolution?
Resolution expressing the City of Ferguson's commitment to public safety and law enforcement support and authorizing the application for designation as a Missouri Blue Shield community.
City manager Hampton.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Mayor, um, what this has done, Governor Quixote uh created this program in order for our police department to take grants through the state of Missouri, that be part of this program.
Thank you. Any questions? Here none. I'm requesting a motion in a second for approval.
So moved.
Second, Linda Lipka.
Clerk Pittman, could you please call Row?
Aye.
Mayor John.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lipka.
Aye.
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 Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eleven passes. We don't have any bills for the first reading nor the second reading. We move to the certification of the April eighth, twenty twenty-five elections result. Clerk Pittman.
Uh, yes, I received the certified elec- uh, election results from the St. Louis County Board of Elections. Um, the results read as follows. For council ward one, uh, Henry Iwennelfu, three hundred thirty-three votes. Mike Palmer, four hundred forty-five votes. Um, and then a write-in Rebecca Bryan, five votes. Ward two, Jamil Franklin, four hundred twenty-seven votes. Larry Robinett, three hundred forty, uh, three hundred forty-nine votes. Ward three, Lamika Covington, one hundred seventy-eight votes. Frank Griffin, one hundred forty-four votes.
I requesting a motion in a second to receive. You got one more?
We also have Proposition S.
Oh, thank you.
And there were nine hundred eighty-nine votes, yes, and no, nine hundred and three.
Nothing for profit. Thank you. Okay. I request a motion in a second to receive and file the St. Louis County election results.
So moved. Second, Linda Lipka.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Election results are filed from the St. Louis County. Do we have any unfinished business?
Yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor. So I handed out packets to all of you and I've handed them out to our city manager assistant. So this is just a quick report, my last report from the traffic commission. Um, would just wanted to, this is the information they asked me to bring back to the council. So, uh, traffic agrees with Councilwoman Noah's request for a stop sign at Harrison and Randolph. The traffic commission does not agree with, uh, the stop signs for the other locations. Conclusion on that is that no matter what we agree, what they agree on or not agree on, nothing can be done until we have hired a city engineer. Correct, city manager?
A city engineer and/or we use an engineer firm.
Right, so once those things happen, then movement can be made and that will be under someone else's time. Um, the next thing, traffic requests consideration of larger signs at the speed humps. It was recommended to the city that you look at Kirkwood sizes. We think they are eighteen by twenty-four. Okay. Um, they also wanted to ask the council to consider the abatement team to take over the placement and movement of the Jamar device. Officer Byron Brooks, the traffic officer now works with Terry Fuchet downloading and managing the data. Uh, we also want to say a huge thanks to Leon in Public Works for all of his help. The, uh, the traffic commission has had people bring to them the fact that there are long stretches between the speed humps. That the citizens on those, in those areas are noticing that the person slows down, goes over the speed hump, then speeds like a demon. Gets to the next speed hump, slows down, then speeds like a demon. So it was a suggestion that we may consider in the future, speed bumps between the speed humps. Um, so just to keep, because they're, they are very, 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 very successful. These people in these neighborhoods are seeing a major drastic change. Um, the traffic commissioner's police report, we're seeing a major reduction in speed on the roads where we have the speed humps. We're also pleased to point out that the combination of creating a traffic officer and supplying Jamar data on speeding to the Ferguson PD. Has been able to make an impact in a very short time on speeding. Uh, if you look at the attachment on the next page, in February, we had, uh, two hundred and forty-nine citations. And a hundred and forty warnings that went out for an overall total of three hundred and eighty-nine traffic, uh, situations, traffic stops, traffic communication. In March, we've had two hundred and thirteen warnings and four hundred and thirty-six citations. So we're slowing them down. We're giving the police department, the traffic commission is using the Jamar data to give the police department direct and focused areas that need to have the traffic control and it is making a difference. Um, also, the Jamar study locations, we are very pleased to let you know, Councilwoman Noah, we have completed the studies on all the streets that you requested. So those are done and I am not gonna go through each and every one of them, but you're welcome. Um, but they're in there. I will say, uh, and I've listed the studies that are complete and the studies that are still open. So I will let council review that on their own time. But just to give you an idea of the difference we're seeing, um, from instance on LaMott. On April third through April tenth, we had seven hundred and forty-nine cars go by. Twenty-nine percent or twenty-nine were enforceable violations. Twenty-nine. That's four percent enforceable violations. It is a speed limit of twenty-five. The average speed, speed now is eighteen. The fastest speed was forty-three, the slowest speed was seven. Um, I am gonna go through just three. On, uh, March twenty-eighth through, uh, April second, on Olympia. We had one thousand five hundred and forty-seven cars analyzed, six hundred and thirty-nine were vi, enforceable violations. That's forty-one percent. That was still high. Um, twenty-five mile an hour zone, average speed twenty-eight, twenty-four, I'm sorry, and fastest speed fifty-eight. So even though there's enforceable, we're seeing the average speed much, much closer to the speed limit. So I take that as a win. Um, the la, now, last one I'll share with you is five fifteen Carson. This was from March seventeen through March twenty-first. One thousand six hundred and seventy-two cars were analyzed, two were enforceable violations. Twenty-five is the speed limit, thirteen was the average speed, thirty was the fastest speed, seven was the slowest speed. I mean, it's almost unbelievable, except for the fact that it's data and the data doesn't lie. So I'm really, really pleased. I want this community to know that this is the work of the traffic commission. This is the work that you are supporting and that, uh, your support with our police officers and the Jamar device and the speed humps is making a difference in the quality of life. So that's all I have on that. Thank you very much. And council members, I really hope you'll go through the information on your own time.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lipka. Councilman Castle.
I have a quick question for Chief Hampton. Um, the sewer lateral program will be going from eighty-five percent to a hundred percent based on the, uh, vote that we just accepted. Um, when will that change actually take place?
So. I believe once we start collecting the money, unless council.
January twenty twenty-six.
Next, January twenty twenty-six.
Yes, what? I was talking, okay.
It's tackling your taxes.
That's just round the corner.
But it, that, that brings a good point up though, I mean, because what happens with our sewer laterals is we destroy our streets, correct? And so I don't want people pushing off, you know, because that's one thing that's gonna happen. They're gonna wait till that checkpoint is a hundred percent.
Right, and I know people in that hole right now.
Well, us as a city need to figure out how we combat that with the new council because I'd rather maybe pick up something out and pay a lot less than fixing the street as well.
Yeah, because two people are already calling.
What we can do is we can want some figures of what we can see projected and then potentially give you a kind of an estimate. Uh, where we could be expected to pay. I see what we can come up with, some data.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, new business.
Mayor, I have new business. Just right quick, I have two sets of new business. Please take one, pass it down. And I have a sheet for the clerk and the city manager. The new business, the first set is, um, regarding the, uh, park at Nesbit Newton. At the last Nes, Nesbit Newton meeting, the residents voiced their concern about the playground equipment. And I explained that the park is gonna be renovated next year. So the ask is if we can have that equipment removed. Because it's in very poor condition and they are concerned about the youth getting hurt. And so, um, if that's something that we can do or, and we're having a meeting tomorrow, I don't know if someone can come.
Dave, Dave knows more about parks than I do.
Okay.
We could take the equipment out in the next month if that's what the residents would like. It's just gonna be a void there. I mean, but if that's what they really want, it's just a matter of going in, ripping the equipment out. We'll do a little bit of backfill for some holes and that sort of thing, but it's definitely something we can handle.
Okay, thank you. And, and we are having a meeting tomorrow and then we'll be at the park on Thursday. So if someone can come and.
Just to be transparent, um, in the past, we've gotten requests from a few residents in that neighborhood for certain things. Um, I would like the opportunity to reach out to a majority of the neighbors before that would be done.
Exactly.
Um, a good example in my experience was the picnic tables. We removed the picnic tables five, six years ago. Other neighbors complained they were gone. Um, so by all means, I think Joseph and I are coming to the meeting because I spoke to him a couple of days ago. Uh, but I would hate for it to be a small majority that wants to remove and there's more backlash. Uh, so if yourself, other members are willing to canvass neighborhood or get that data and we're comfortable taking it out, by all means, that's something city staff can handle. I would just hate to do that and then there'd be repercussions that we're not.
And I agree, that's why the meeting's there. Um, so we, we'll see, you know, whatever. Again, I'm just bringing it up because they, you know, voiced their concern and there were about fifteen people at the last meeting. And so they're concerned about it, so I'm concerned about it, so I'm bringing.
The other thing to keep in mind, um, that is slated for next year. That is a grant project. I would hate to rip it out and then the grant isn't approved and they don't have anything for a year.
Okay.
So make sure we're clear on that, that that's the expectation. It's like a hundred percent, yes, we are writing that grant. We're planning on funding it, um, but at the same time, nothing's guaranteed.
Okay, well, again, if, you know, we can just work together on this to explain, better explain to the residents what's going on. Because they have also voiced their concern about the park renovation. The next set of new business is regarding fifty-three sixteen Elsie. And what the residents spoke about earlier, and I have brought in some pictures. This allegedly has been going on for about over twenty years. I don't know if there's a spring underneath or at the property. My question is if we can work together to find out what is the origin of this leak. Because it leaks really, really bad and the streets freezes and the residents have voiced their concern, which is why I went around on, while, which is why I went on Elsie the other day and spoke to residents and asked them if they would come out.
Yeah, off of that, um, I, Corey Gilbert already went there and he was, myself and him, we're supposed to have a meeting.
Okay, thank you. That's it, thank you.
Any other new business? Councilwoman Lipka.
I would just like to just point out one thing. When you guys have that meeting about the Nesbit Newton playground equipment, you know, before the boundary changes, that was part of Ward one. So I'm very familiar with the park. Um, but I'm also very familiar, uh, before you even came on council and, and I know you've heard it too, now that you've been on council. Is the problems of people walking through from the apartment complex and people driving cars back there and dropping them off in that back creek area and things like that. So, you know, let's be, I, I'm not saying don't do it, I, you know, do what, what works best for the community. But keep in mind unintended consequences. If you take out that playground and now you have one big flat area. You could be asking for a whole hell of a lot of trouble. And that's one of the things that those neighbors have been through way too much. And they've had way too much happening in their backyards and on the street and I would hate to see, I would hate to see that happen to them. So just keep that in mind when you're making these decisions, because these are elderly people that own those homes.
Well, um, cars cannot pass through that anymore because the fire department has blocked that off for years.
Well, no, there's still an area back there.
No, it is fixed now. A bunch of.
Well, was, there was a car back there when we did the mulch thing about two years ago.
Well, that is fixed.
Yeah, okay, good.
Any other new business? Clerk Pittman, can I go? Okay, dokey. Councilwoman Lipka. Yeah.
Pam, Jenna. Family.
Okay. This is presented to Councilwoman Linda Lipka. In recognition of service as a member of the Ferguson City Council, twenty sixteen through twenty twenty-five. Your time in office has provided us with a living definition of a passionate leader. Your leadership, a passionate leadership, inspiring and motivating individuals through enthusiasm. Optimism, commitment.
I'm too much talking.
No. You have been very productive. We have walked some narrow paths together and here we stand today. So, I love you.
I love you too.
And I'm gonna miss you. On behalf of the city of Ferguson, thank you for your tireless efforts to preserve all that is good for Ferguson, all that has been good for the council. All that has been good for the various, uh, boards and commissions that you have served. And especially doing your taste of Ferguson that brought everyone out to come together as a community. Once again, we love you. Councilwoman Robinette. This is presented to Councilwoman Heather Robinette. In recognition of service as a member of our Ferguson City Council, twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-five. Your time in office had provided us with a living definition of a diplomatic leader. And she is, whenever I get perplexed, I call Heather. And we have these long conversations. And she said, okay, let's try this. It works. And you, your understanding, your perspectives to achieve harmony. Tagful, understanding and empathetic. On behalf of the city of Ferguson, thank you. Thank you for your service.
Do we want to do all three of us up here? Do we want to do a picture of the three of us up here?
Yeah.
Be careful.
Okay. This is three. Race in the meeting. Okay, council members, would you come? Take a picture. Always, always, always.
Remodel the line, can we like shift in the middle so the words are back there?
Stand in the back.
It had to be more round.
This way.
Councilman. One, two, three.
All right.
There you go. There's a big.
Thank you, sir, for standing those types of shit. Now we move to our miscellaneous, um, Councilwoman Nor.
Don't be long. Congratulations to the election winners. Thank you for your service to those council persons who have turned out. And, um, the, for the people who did not win the election, keep up the good work. On Thursday, April twenty-fourth, from two thirty into five thirty, the Great Rivers Greenway, along with other community partners respond, will sponsor a party in the park at Nesbit Newton Park. So hopefully you all can come out and celebrate with us. Um, tomorrow is the Nesbit Newton. Um, tomorrow is the Nesbit Newton meeting at six P M. It is. At the Ferguson Empowerment Center. So hopefully Nesbit Newton, Newton will come out. Southwest Ferguson meeting will be Monday, April twenty eighth at six P M. On Zoom. And in person at Truvai Missionary Baptist Church. The Zoom information is on the city of Ferguson's website on the calendar. Kudos to Ferguson F P D. Um, and the fire department on the drill training. And kudos to the Public Works Department um, on the street repairs that have been going on, not the Arpa street repairs. But I know that Public Works has been out there repairing some streets and filling potholes and um, you know, um. The residents appreciate that so much because I'm out there talking to the residents and most of their. The resident's first question is, what's going on my street councilor, while in court, manor, manner? Like, you know, what's going on with the repair on LC? Um, I just want the residents to know that, you know, we are working on it and we appreciate your continued patience. Looking forward to more street repairs. Uh, kudos to the finance department. What a great job. And the city staff. I mean, when we first came on council, when I came on council in twenty one, things were. Good, then it took a dip and now they're great. And so just staff, thank you. We appreciate you all. Um, I'm looking forward to working with the new council, the city manager and the mayor. And thank you all. Please be safe and happy Earth Day.
Thank you, Councilwoman Noah. Councilman Cassel.
I just want to say a brief thanks to my two outgoing colleagues. Uh, both of them have meant a lot as a freshman member of this council. When I, when I want to talk something out, all the way out, you know Linda's the one that's gonna do that. And uh, and Heather has been my council mom. Even though she's younger than me, when, when I, when I was sick, she brought me soup and she's, she's baked me cookies. Although she called me a few days ago and asked whether I wanted walnuts in my cranberry oatmeal cookies and I still don't have any cookies. So, I don't know what the deal is there. Uh, let the record show, I'm team no nuts. But it's.
Only me and Connie, only him.
It's, it, it's, it's been a pleasure, really a pleasure serving with you and. You know, coming in here at your first year on council, everything's new. You don't know a lot of what's going on. And so it, it was great to have seasoned people here that took the time to. Steer me in the right direction and sometimes slap me when I was going in the wrong direction. So uh, thank you to both of you.
Thanks, Dylan. Councilman Williams.
Um, I want to thank Heather and Linda. I want to start with Linda first, cause I've known her the longest. So she was actually my campaign manager. And even when stuff was negative for her. Uh, she always made it positive for me. And she didn't tell me some of the back and forth that goes on in our community. If she had, I probably would not have ran. Uh, so she always kept it positive and I think we're in the uh, Jeski Park neighborhood and it's really hilly.
It was Robert Superior.
Okay, Robert Superior. So she had on her, her hookahs. Real expensive tennis shoes and I'm like, please slow down. Cause I can't keep up. She's like, come on. You know, times when I, when I didn't want to get out, she was like, we're going. You know, knocking on doors and I think that was some of the uh, best experiences because I got to meet people. Cause I was new to Ferguson to see what some of their issues were. But the main thing about Linda that a lot of people don't know, um. She sent a lot of people to college with their scholarship in memory of her daughter, black and white. I mean, a lot of people. And she doesn't really prophesize that, but. I mean, it, it's a lot of kids that went to college. My uh, my neighbor's daughter was the first recipient of that scholarship. And you know, she doesn't broadcast that, but I just. Want you to think that she's done a lot for this community. And sending kids to colleges is really important. A lot of those kids actually come back or they stay in Ferguson. And that's what we need. Uh, second, uh, Heather Robinette, I've known her. The least amount of time, but she's made a, a large impact on my life. Uh, sometimes I try to uh, hold my emotions back when it's negative. I, I can't help myself. I have to clap back. Uh, but I'm trying to control that. So Heather gets frustrated, but you will never see it. She has a, a calm demeanor. In the background when nobody's looking, it's a different story. But in public, her skin is thick as thieves. She doesn't get upset. She doesn't show a lot of emotion. And I'm, I'm trying to be like that. And I just want you guys to realize nine years is, that's, that's almost a decade of service. This is, this is like a jury duty. You not get paid a lot. And I think Heather's first three years, she didn't even take that money. Oh, six years, excuse me. She didn't take a penny. So that was really uh, jury duty. So I just want to thank, thank you guys. For your service. I, I've done a year and I'm almost tapped out. I can't imagine nine years. So, you know. I just want to thank you guys on your way out and I know you're gonna continue to support this community and do positive things.
City Clerk.
Um, I already shared my heartfelt sentiments with uh, both of them. Um, but it has been a pleasure. Um, you all have supported me along the way and I do appreciate that and all the work that you've done. Um, as I said, you know, before. You know, if anything worth it is gonna have adversity and you know, you've had a lot of that. So, um, but I appreciate the two of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tavia.
Okay, Attorney Ryan.
Um, I echo the comments. Appreciate the service of the outgoing members. Look forward to the service of the incoming though.
Yes.
Okay. Assistant City Manager.
Yeah, I'll echo the same comments. Thank you both. It's been a pleasure. Um, look forward to the new council members coming in as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Robinette.
Okay. So, um, I'm gonna try to do this without crying, but. Um, you know, nine years ago, we had just signed the consent decree. And there was a lot of concern about. How we were gonna get through as a city. And my hope was that. By the time I finished my tenure, that we would be out from under the decree, like that we would be in compliance. Um, and that's still going on, but I know that, that we've worked hard as a council throughout the years and the different configurations of the council. Um, have worked very hard to uh, get as far as we are. Um, and the, the fiscal responsibility that we have as council members to the community. Has been something that has been near and dear to me. Um, and serving on the pension board too, like seeing, seeing that we are good stewards of the money. That is entrusted to us has been very important to me. I'd say one of the best things about being on council is how many people you get to meet in the community that you would never meet otherwise. And some are very loud and. But I, I have to say that I have friends that I would never have met. Um, people that are near and dear to me that I would not have known otherwise. It has been. My sincere honor to serve and I am going to miss.
I'm gonna miss you.
You and I am going to miss serving with you.
Yeah.
And the rest of council. Okay. Um, that is it, Mayor, but one, one more thing. Thank you for all the, all the talks that we've had. You know, we ran a race against each other and kept that on the up and up and. I'd say that Ferguson is really lucky to have people who are so passionate about the community at large and not. So wrapped up in the politics, as it were. So, um, keep up the good work and thank you.
Love you.
I love you.
I say, save Linda for last. Come on, Miss Linda.
So, so surprisingly, um. Stop. So surprisingly, um, I, I, I didn't want to wing it tonight. I, I'm very good at talking from my heart. I'm very good at talking off the cuff, but I wanted. I did not want to wing it tonight. Um. I have learned over my lifetime in Ferguson that it is imperative to volunteer. It is the only way to create a community that you want your children to grow up in. That you can thrive it, that you can take deep pride in. I have volunteered from being a room mother, a girl scout leader, a sports coach, a community event organizer to running for office. Which I now know is the highest form of volunteerism and the most brutal. I have learned that no matter how hard I wanted to please everyone, I could not volunteer anyway. I have learned there, you're only as good as the needs people have at the moment. Volunteer anyway. I have learned that when you help someone, they are thankful for the moment. But when you don't have the resources, they think you do and you can't help the way they want you to. Then you are forever crucified as useless. Volunteer anyway. But when you volunteer, heed my advice. Volunteer with pre-established boundaries. Boundaries you will not bend, break or step over for anyone. Boundaries that protect your sanity, your heart, your purpose, your self-worth, your time and your family. Never ever apologize or explain your boundaries. And I learned that from Mayor Jones. Volunteer with a clean, clear and solid reason for why you are doing it. One that gives you purpose, keeps you steadfast in your goals and inspires you and those around you. Volunteer ready to work hard, ready to get dirty and sweat, ready to spend long hours in meetings for the betterment of your community. A balanced budget and a promising future. Be ready for hard conversations, ready to listen, ready to try on new ideas that seem foreign or odd. Ready to be loved and hated at the same time and sometimes by the same person. Volunteer anyway. Volunteer knowing not everything, everyone that is smiling at you is your friend and not everyone who isn't speaking to you is against you. They may be looking at you as inspiration. Volunteer anyway. Walk into every event, every meeting with a servant's heart and leave each one with lessons learned, actions to be taken and new understandings. But whatever you do, whatever you see, whatever you hear, know this. Volunteer because you are the change that you are waiting for in your community. Volunteer. Bring your kids, teach them to volunteer and lead the next generation with your actions. Finally. Thank you for the honor of being on this council. For the honor of helping citizens one-on-one within neighborhoods or as a whole alongside my fellow council members. We've balanced budgets, we've preserved our reserve, we have not gone bankrupt when all was against us. And we have a strong and committed and dedicated staff and city manager. I beg of the regular attendees at these council meetings to give this new council a chance. Maybe take a moratorium from anger and let them create a working relationship for the next four months. Kindness goes a lot further in achieving what is wanted than anger. In closing. Thank you to all the staff in Ferguson, the department heads. Corey, Joseph, Chris Crable, everyone in P D. Everyone in Fire Department who actually saved my life during a council meeting one night. Because my heart rate was so high, John Hampton said if I argued with him, he was going to throw me in the ambulance. He took my tablet away that night too, but I had my cell phone, so I was still on the council meeting while I was in the emergency room.
She was.
I was. Um, I want to thank everyone on P D and Fire Department. I want to thank Octavia. Apollo, Troy Doyle, Pat Washington, Dave and John. Thank you to the council I have served with, especially Heather, and thank you Ella. We've come a long way together and I like where we've landed. Keep doing the good work, please Ella. Thank you to my husband, John, my son AJ, my kids Jamicia, Megan, Mike and many, many more. And thank you to the citizens. I ask for your prayers as I start a new chapter in my life. And I will continue to pray for Officer TJ Brown. I ask that someone on council continue to do it with this community. Until he comes back into this room with us all. Thank you very much. Linda Lipka, out.
Thank you. Thank you. John, would you like to share you had a runoff, but you came back. So would you like to share? Uh, uh, words of wisdom and encouragement to our outgoing council women. Oh, okay. Okay, I just would like to say to Linda, we have come a long way and. We grew as sisters.
Yes, we did.
We grew as sisters and I often call you and ask you how you're coming along with your mom. And cared about you because it is very hard to be a caregiver. A lot of people don't understand that, but I did really. I wanted you to know that I care because she was a caregiver. And you done your mom proud. And I know she's up in heaven looking down on you and saying, good job.
Thank you. I forgot to tell you, this is one of her, I, this is one of her uh, creations. So my mother. She dyed the silk, she painted the silk, she cut it and made it into a jacket. So. And then this is her jewelry that she made and her necklace. And this is just one piece of many, many pieces. Um, but I wore it to bring her with me tonight.
So thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Mayor.
And to Heather, like Heather is very diplomatic. And uh, oftentimes I will call you and I say that before, but one thing she mentioned tonight. Heather and I ran a race for mayor. We talked all through the race. We didn't do anything harmful to each other. We didn't try to tear each other down because we knew after the race was over with, we still had to work together. And the night when the results came in, Heather came to my watch party and we had fun sitting outside talking. I long for those type of days again, that people can run a race in Ferguson. And still talk to each other, still be friends with each other and congratulate each other when they get finished. I long for those times to come back. Love you and appreciate you. Uh, at this time, I am going to request a motion in a second to adjourn, sign or die.
So moved, Heather Robinette. Second, Linda Lipka.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. You are adjourned, sign or die. We have another meeting. Actually, you don't have to know. You kiss your baby. I haven't called me back on.
I've been a shopping shop for ten years. I know who shop is.
Yeah, I can shop. I can shop.
It's kind of going on.
You know what, that is true. You said no, but then on the inside. We'll start again in about five minutes, okay?
Was that? I did, I did. Did you?
Yeah.
What did you think? You know, um, I, I was surprised to work back that was that close. I'm interested to see who comes ahead. And I thought, I really liked the wide receiver, Miley Grand, thirty-five. The only thing is, you know, I felt there were a couple of times, you know. I, I feel like the kids, yeah, it's gonna sound like an old topic, but. I, I feel like the kids, yeah, it's gonna sound like an old topic, but I have one hand, which really fancy. And I love, you know, the new tight end, the player. I mean, I think Trey Bowne and Jack Dink is such a big name, but I really, I thought the long guys. Yes, man, they're big. I feel like that's been kind of ridiculous the last couple of years. It's like seeing like looking at the screen. Uh, it's really exciting because I feel like it's been probably been like. You know, Texas is gonna be like if it's shot.
You break your bones.
And I wanted, say today said about the Jack's heart is vulnerable recovery. He's like once, he's a default, never bounced first like that. It's a bounce break like that.
Please take a seat so we can see. Okay. All right, everyone, get your cake or whatever. We, we didn't have a reception till after the meeting, but y'all start a reception in yourself, so. And Scott, don't leave. I have something for you. If I could whistle. Alrighty, we need to start the next meeting. Scott, don't leave. I have something for you. It's in my office, but Amy, give it to Scott. Give it to Scott. He's green t-shirt. Alrighty, here we go. Good evening and welcome to the Ferguson City Council meeting. At this time, we will call our meeting to order. Meeting is now called to order. Clerk Pittman, could you please administer the oath, the oath of office?
First, I have Michael Palmer.
And then I am not subject to any disqualification.
Any disqualification.
Set forth in charter. In relation to the office of council member of the City of Ferguson. And that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States. And the State of Missouri. And the Charter and Ordnances of the City of Ferguson, Missouri. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
I do know Franklin.
That I possess all the qualifications. Required by the charter. And that I am not subject to any disqualification. Set forth in the charter. In relation to the office of council member of the City of Ferguson, Missouri. And that I will support the Constitution of law of the United States. And of the State of Missouri. And the Charter and Ordnances of the City of Ferguson. And that I was faithfully discharged the duties of my office.
Come get your high chair.
I accept your name. And that I am not in relation to the office of council member and that I will support the Constitution of law and the Charter and of the City of Ferguson. And that I will faithfully discharge the of my office.
Alright. At this time, Clerk Pittman, could you please call the robe? Here.
Councilman Katsop?
Yep.
Councilman Franklin?
Yes.
Councilman Palmer?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here. A quorum is present. At this time, we move to our public comments.
I have Shirley Emerson.
Ms. Emerson?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff. I'm Shirley Emerson, and I'm coming tonight as president of the Forestwood Community Development Corporation. Um, I've been to the council previously, and I'm coming again to reiterate our interest in pursuing the historic designation process for the Northland Hills neighborhood. So toward that end, we are requesting that fifty thousand dollars be included in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget for the Economic Development Sales Tax Commission. And we asking that it be designated for the purpose of assisting the Forestwood Community Development Corporation in its endeavor to pursue this historic designation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Emerson.
Adrian Schrockshire?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening, citizens. And I want to congratulate all of our new council women and men on the dais this evening. And wow, I wish we could get all these people back at the city council meeting. That would be great. And that's what I would like for the new council to try to do, to get citizens to participate within our community. It's very valuable. You miss out when you don't show up. Um, I'm here this evening to talk about Juneteenth. We're going on our fourth year. We had to move it from five oh one to Forestwood Park. Last year, we had to turn down approximately thirty vendors because it wasn't enough room. My first year, we didn't turn down anybody. The mayor and I and a few others put it together. And now it's expanded so big and it's so popular for this, our city and the surrounding. I hope to see all the council members to be there. And I want to thank the city for their budget that they gave us to, to make this affair a success. June the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, cut that day out. Forestwood Park from four PM to nine PM. We're gonna have a lot of things going on for youth, for little kids. We're gonna have vendors. We'll probably have about fifty vendors there. We're gonna have a vendor's tent. We're gonna have the slides. We're gonna have all kind of games for kids. We're gonna have an art tent. A fabulous art tent. And if you haven't seen the Sunshine Dancers, they are outstanding. Uh, last year, one of them was blowing fire out their mouth. They are outstanding African dancers. They put on a great show. They've been with us for four years now. There's a, the, the flyer is on the city website. If you know any vendors, any vendors, any artists, the QR code is at the bottom. They can hit the QR code and it's on in the Public Works on the Parks rather, uh, flyer in the booklet. We're more than happy to have the vendors to come in and be a part of this, uh, great affair. Just remember, cut this day out, June the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. And if you need any other assistance, get hold of Ms. Octavia or me, Adrian Schrockshire, or Deborah Carter. We are the committee. It's a slim committee, but we'll be putting it all on very, it's gonna be a very good event. One thing I want you to know, we will be putting a bow, a big red bow on each of our new businesses that have opened up in Ferguson. And we'll have a, a ribbon cutting for the new businesses up on our stage. So you just remember, June the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, from four PM to nine PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schopshire.
Erica Brooks?
Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to all the new state council members and the current ones as well. Um, I want to reach out to you all as a whole, and then also as my, uh, council people in the war too. I want to, uh, ask if you all could seek jobs for our area so that we can be able to have, uh, youth and family members to be able to, uh, have places of employment. Also, when it comes to Dave Park, I have also, uh, asked numerous times to be able to, uh, have a vibrant, community-oriented, uh, park over there. Um, we don't have electricity over there to be able to, uh, have events. Uh, we don't have lighting over there for real. I mean, it's, it's dark over there. Um, I look at Forestwood and January Wild Bash Park as examples to where they're created for families. They have, uh, workout equipment for, uh, older people, you know, youth and grown people. Um, if there could be like a, a basketball court that was like in, um, Tinlock where it was painted, it was nice, it was pretty vibrant, made you want to come to the park, even though people talked about Tinlock, they wanted to play basketball in that area. Uh, it's a, it's a walking trail. I said that, that could possibly be something that's, uh, painted, made look nice and, and, and vibrant. Also, uh, we had soccer down here. Why not have volleyball down in our park down there? And people, if you build it, they will come. You know, just like I said, have something that's, uh, family oriented in our Dave Park area and have more parking. And, uh, uh, like I say, different things for different people throughout the family, different ages. Um, also, uh, if you could work on getting something dealing with our flooding, because you know, war two is a huge area for, for flood plain. When it comes to, uh, when I was knocking on doors for, uh, uh, and, you know, just recently, uh, the Hearn, the Hearn Street, those two or three streets right there in, in a row, if you look at the very end, whenever it rains, it's flooded down there. Um, yeah, if, if you could create some, uh, some coverts down there and also look throughout the ward, of war two, where it's the flood plain and clean out the sewers, clean out the sewers so that the families won't have to worry about flooding happening in the area, because I know various other past city council members in war two have complained about erosion and people houses, uh, foundation, because I know my house that I'm living in right now is, you know, it shifted, the foundation has shifted. Because the ground is soft and I was told by somebody that lives on my street that it was a lake in that area at one point in time. So it's soft, ground is soft. And also I was wanting to know if you all could, uh, you know, summertime is coming up and you're gonna have youth that are out, um, needing something to do. So we're talking about jobs and also looking at, um, different summer programs to keep them busy. So that's pretty much all I have. And like I said, welcome. And, uh, I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Brooks. We have anyone on Zoom?
No.
Okay, thus in our public comments, at this time, we have moved to the election of the mayor pro tem. And I just want to preference this by saying, uh, the mayor pro tem, that person I can, I talk to often, as you know, Heather saved, she and I always had conversation and I talked to Linda. Uh, it's more than being, uh, taking a seat if I'm in, if I, uh, am not able to attend, but it's a lot of conversation goes on between the mayor and the mayor pro tem. So at this time, I'mma open up the floor for nominations for the mayor pro tem.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Councilwoman Noah for mayor pro tem.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? The nomination is closed. Are you ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it, councilwoman? Nor is mayor pro tem. We move to the appointments of council members to boards and commission. This is the place we always have fun. You want to be first?
Well, whenever you're ready, Madam Mayor. Well, no, I think we already talked about something.
Okay, you already talked about something. Okay, let's hear what you have to say, Councilwoman Castle.
She, I have C R B, uh, and E D S T right now. She wanted C R B, so I'm willing to give that to her. And the chair of the traffic commission had told me she wanted me to be there liaison, and I used to be on traffic. So I'd like to take traffic, which was Linda's, so if that's okay with everybody. And I don't know what she wants for her second.
Okay, who's next? Councilwoman Noah?
I would like to keep F S B D, H R C, and the other board that I have that, that we never meet. There's been no need. I think it's the Board of Appeals.
Build a board of appeals.
Build, okay, so I'd like to keep H R C and F S B D.
Okay, David? Councilman Williams, I'm sorry.
I just want to do, uh, the Ferguson Youth Initiative. So my email didn't work for like the first six months, so I never really made contact with him. And I think I'm on, uh, human resources and library. I think library is a waste of time, to be honest. Because they have their own agenda, and I'm like, what am I here for? They're like, you just tell us what's going on in the city.
Okay, uh, Councilman?
Franklin.
Franklin?
So I would like, uh, planning and zoning, and I kind of also wanted C R B, but you know, it's all good. Uh, so, but I, I definitely want planning and zoning, and I'm open to anything else that, you know, you guys deem.
How about library?
Councilwoman Covington? Councilman Mike Palmer?
I'm fine with the boards I have, but I also do have interest in planning and zoning.
Well, I've been on senior commission for going on ten years now. So I would like to stay at senior commission and add the pension board. So we have two people who want C R B. Do you want traffic? Is that not correct?
Yes.
Okay. I tell you, if you keep it up. Okay. Traffic and, I, I can tell you what I have so far.
E D S T.
Traffic, uh, okay. Councilman Castoff, he's gonna do traffic and E D S T, right?
Yeah, and if you don't have nobody for library, I'll do it, but I, there's other people, so.
I know. I'm trying to pitch to everybody.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't need another.
And, um, Councilman Williams, you don't want library anymore. Is that not correct?
Yeah, I just want Ferguson Youth Initiative. Taxis isn't over. Nick can do library.
So, um, Councilman William is going to do the youth initiative.
That's all.
Okay, that's, that's okay. Councilman Palmer?
I think I currently have F N I P, been Board of Adjustment, and maybe one other that
Architect.
A R B, which has never met since I've been on council, so I have a pretty light load, so that's why I'd be interested in the planning commission as well.
And library.
Not library.
Okay. Councilman Franklin?
So I would like planning and zoning, and you know, if we can reach an agreement, I'm gonna, I could give it up if you give me F N I P.
I'll take both of those, F N I P and planning and zoning.
No, I, I want planning and zoning.
We can, we, we can make a vote?
Now, we don't, we really don't need to vote. We have come to, Miss Covington? Okay, this, uh, Councilwoman Covington is taking C R B and parks. Councilwoman Noah? Okay, that's Josh. So here we have planning and zoning and the library, F N I P, and what else? I'm ta, I, uh, Clerk Pippin, senior citizen and pension for the mayor. Okay.
So I, I'll just say I've served on planning and zone in the last two years, so I feel it's a natural fit for me. Uh, is there a reason why you want it so strongly?
I'm the largest land developer in the city of Ferguson. I think I would serve a very good role on the planning and zoning board.
Oh, whoa, whoa, excuse me. Please don't speak out. Just, please don't speak out. Okay, here we go. You know what I'm gonna do? Would you two excuse yourself and y'all talk it out and come back and let us know? Would that work for you two?
Works for me.
Okay. Okay. Give them five, ten minutes. Let them talk great and come back. If you keep doing the thing, if you keep doing the same thing the same way and expect different results, that is the definition of not being successful.
Insanity too.
I, I didn't want to say it's insanity. I just say not being successful. City manager?
Uh, we still have a number left. We have a number of them left. They haven't gotten to those yet.
Yeah, we have, we have, these are the main ones. You know, we're trying to hash out.
Unless mayor, do you want the West Floreson?
No.
Okay.
I just want them to talk it out. You could go back there with, if you want to.
Well, the last time. Do you want, uh, Dwayne James? H, H R C together.
That's why I said, I'm pretty sure I'm there. Hope to vote tonight, but they said on both of you. I mean, it's certainly it's been for both of you, right? But that's what I was, it's obviously, you know, that's what I was trying to do.
You can be excused.
We, we've got money.
And that'd be, is that'd be it? I already have landmark. Oh. Yes.
Yeah, now the taxis are over. I got time.
Okay.
That's the truth. Yeah, I didn't have time for nothing.
Okay. Okay. He chose upon, how you doing? So you know he's just, but you still want to see your citizens, what to say? You went to pants. The move since last time I remember.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Doing all right, man. What's going on? Out here in Ferguson.
Okay. All righty. Yeah.
We need to get you some kind of alternative seating. I think we need an accommodation.
My lid, my father's.
Buy something. One of them is a little chair. No, 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 because she doesn't be able to see.
Now, if you don't let her cash it out, it's gonna be ugly all the way through. So, um, it should be able to work together. You work with Gina. Tours and stuff. Okay. All righty, here we go. We are back. We are back. We are back. We are back. Okay, tell me what you two have decided.
So we're actually gonna share planning and zoning, and then I'll also take the Board of Adjustments.
Mike?
It's fine.
It's fine? Okay. You got it? Um, Ms. Hightager?
Okay, well, let me speak. I didn't know that we could share boards, and if that's the case, mayor, if you want to share F S B D, we can share F S B D.
We can share F S B D, that's fine.
I didn't know we could share.
That'll be fine.
We can share.
Uh, Councilwoman Covington, where you're going to take landmarks?
Yes, ma'am.
And Jill is a great person to work with. I don't know where she is. And Councilman Castoff, you are going to take the library board?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's everything. What you?
Technology board.
The technology. Who's good with computers? Not me.
I'm good enough.
Oh, take technology. Okay. Jamil gonna take technology. That's everything.
So Frank, technology?
Yeah. And they're gonna share planning and zoning. I'll take personnel, okay?
We also have the housing board of appeal.
That's, it's not true, Shreer. If, I'll do it if it's, I think.
We don't have nobody.
Oh, no, he's, he's the other one that's like that on the Board of Adjustment.
Did we assign the Board of Adjustment?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay, the Board of Adjustment works with planning and zoning and the Housing Board of Appeal, um.
They haven't made, we really don't have members, but they all kind of go together too, so.
Okay. We still have Jeski Park.
You guys hit before.
You live in Chesapeake Park, okay. He'll take Chesapeake Park, and I'll take the Ferguson Future Foundation.
All right.
Okay? But anything else we have left? Council lady, I mean, uh, s- city clerk?
No, but let me read them off so that way.
Okay.
So for Covington, I have landmarks, C R B and parks. For Castoff, I have E D S T, traffic, library, and Jeski. For Noah, I have F S B D, H R C, and West Floreson. Williams, I have F Y A B with the Youth Advisory, um, and tech board.
No, she gave it to you.
Jamil has it.
Okay, for Franklin, I have plan, which is shared, Board of Adjustments and tech.
Right.
Palmer, F I P, A R B, and plan, which is shared. Uh, Mayor Jones, you have senior pension, uh, Ferguson Futures Personnel, and you're sharing F S B D.
Yes. That's everything?
That's all.
House members of boards and commissions have been appointed when I tell you send you the master.
Correction. Who did you say for Housing Board of Appeal? I don't think we ever.
Which doesn't even exist.
It doesn't exist, nobody's own. I know, but there's no one on it.
If Jamil's Board of Adjustment, he should get Housing Board of Appeal.
Okay, would you take the House? The Housing Board of Appeal?
Sure, why not?
Okay. Now.
Okay, now that's all.
Several of these commissions do not have anyone on them. I'm asking that the council reps work together to find people who has the skill level and the desire to be on these boards. Is that fair?
Sounds good.
It, it's fair, you know, simply because when we needed someone for E D S T, I couldn't find the one. Councilman Castoff found someone. I met with the lady, talked with her, and she's a perfect fit. So we have to work together to get these people committed to the boards. On the same note, I will, uh, put it this way. I have asked attorney to look at the application process and see if there's a legal statement that he could put on about people who have committed a crime. Simply because once a person has served their time and they are back in society, we will not penalize them. However, if somebody has not completely done their time, we need to know. Because it is an embarrassment to the city for that to be played out in front of the world. It was ugly and it was not nice. It could have been kept inside of Ferguson or spoken to the council or spoken to the city manager. Uh, if you know that someone has submitted and we're not going to do anything into the, uh, attorney gives us a statement because it's unfair to us as a council to have Channel Two, Channel Four, Channel Five run me down, asking me questions that could have been resolved in-house. And I say that simply because we do not need to play out Ferguson business in the media. We do not need to do that. It's too many of us who are sitting on this council who have common sense. I'm not talking about degrees. I'm talking about common sense. Everybody saying Nick Castoff and I don't get along. That is not true. He calls me and we sit down and talk. This is how you handle council business. We shouldn't be, I, I'm on the soapbox now. We shouldn't be running to the media to try to expose what's going on in this council. Because it doesn't hurt nobody but us. My home says something very significant. He said, who would want to run for a seat in Ferguson if everything is being played out on Facebook? Is that not correct? We don't need that. We don't need that. We don't need that. It becomes our responsibility as a council to lead this city. And if we gonna lead, we gonna lead. That's all I have to say. So I'm calling for a motion in the second to adjourn.
Show move.
Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it. Here we go. Okay. Okay.